All right, it looks like it's 6:15 to May.
Yep.
Well, I'll go ahead and call the May 9, 2017 meeting to order. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body; and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisions of legal advice by such counsel. One, the former Prices Fork Elementary School Comprehensive Community Revitalization Project. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. One, the courthouse property. Discussion or consideration or interviews of respective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, AFD Advisory Committee. Two, Community College Board, New River. Three, Community Service Board, NRV. Four, Fire and Rescue Commission. Five, Juvenile Detention Commission. Six, Library Board. Seven, New River Valley Economic Development Alliance. Eight, Ronan Valley Area MPO. Nine, Board of Zoning Appeals. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Third.
Madam Clerk, would you please, our discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County of Virginia hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this certification is our Board's word to you that we're only discussing matters that we're supposed to be discussing in a closed meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
At this time, we're going to observe a moment of silence, and then the county administrator is going to lead us into a pledge. If we would all rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before we go on to public address, I want to acknowledge that Supervisor Creed is not with us tonight, and we actually moved our meeting from Monday night to tonight, and by doing so, that entered into his vacation plans. And he was willing to make that sacrifice, and I just want to acknowledge that why he's not here, he had planned on being here last night, but tonight, he had already had booked vacation, and so that's why he's not with us. The next item on our agenda is a public address. There's no one signed up, but if there's anyone who would like to address the Board, this is our opportunity to listen to you. We don't normally respond, but anyone who would like to come forward, you have five minutes, and please state your name or address. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close public address. I don't believe that there's an addendum. Is there a motion regarding consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to note that we have a $5,000 grant from the Petco Foundation for the Animal Care and Adoption Center to go towards vaccines and prevention care, so I hope many more follow.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Next, is there a motion to go into work session?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Hillary? Thank you very much.
Good evening. We are going to once again provide a brief update on the Prices Fork Elementary School Revitalization Project, and I just want to touch on a few things beforehand. The project rehab portion in the existing school, the old classrooms, residential component is moving at a little speed ahead. There's also been a lot of energy looking at the other components, and in doing so, the development team has discovered that there is a greater need to expand the rezoned portion of the front, which is zone T and D and film, and so later this month, maybe the 22nd, you'll have a hearing on that. I want to just make sure that I touch on that now to let you know that's separate from this grant conversation we're going to have tonight, but in the work that's gone into it, they've been able to determine the need for additional parking, drive aisles, things like that. So the ultimate result, if you've noticed the ad in the paper, is that about a half-acre portion is being adjusted, and that will reduce the density for the multifamily portion in the rear. They'll lose at least six units by doing that, but they felt it was best to make sure that the project in the front was as viable as possible. So that's what spurred that request, and again, that's separate from the grant conversation we'll talk about tonight. Tonight, Jen is going to pick up where she left off when we last gave you an update, talk a little bit about the next steps of DHCD, the contract, and the associated agreements. As you know, Montgomery County was awarded the grant, but we are contracting with the Regional Commission to administer the grant, so Jen is our expert. So I'm going to turn it over to her, and if you have any questions, we'll both move.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as Emily mentioned, I'm starting sort of where we left off when I came and spoke to you all at the end of February, and at that time, these were our next steps, looking at the contract with DHCD, and then some legal documents that are required to secure those funds, both a developer agreement and a lien instrument that would be with the developer, Taylor Hollow. And again, this is just a refresh, these are some things that we did talk about last time, but the contract is a standard agreement that DHCD uses for all of its grantees, and then they customize it with the details of our specific project. And it, you know, lays out the dollar amount and the deliverables that we need to hit during the project. The developer agreement in this case passes a lot of those requirements on to the developer to be able to construct what we said we were going to build and provide of the jobs, which is the main thing that DHCD is looking for. And then this lien document is the recordable instrument that sits against the property for the long-term investment, which in our case is 10 years. So, like I mentioned, the main deliverable that DHCD is going to be asking us for is a certain amount of jobs created to have an economic development-type project. And so the way that they go about creating that for us is we present them a budget, and anything in that budget that goes towards hard construction or furniture, fixtures, equipment, those types of things, all get counted, and for every $25,000 of grant funds in those eligible categories, we are required contractually to generate one job. So for our project, that equals 29 jobs. And when we submitted the grant back in February of 2016, our estimates were actually higher than that, so we feel comfortable that the 29 is a reasonable number. But that is how DHCD generates what we will be held to contractually. And just to give you an idea of where we think those jobs are coming from, as a refresh, what this grant is funding is the food center, and that is the commercial incubator kitchen that also has business services, and will have a business competition for growing or expanding or startup entrepreneurs, the farm-to-table restaurant, and the brewery. And so these areas are where we're thinking that jobs will be created. There will be a center manager that will be an employee of nonprofit beans and rice, and that will be a job counted. We'll have staff for the restaurant and the brewery. Because the restaurant is a farm-to-table operation, we're hoping to create relationships with regional farmers. If they expand their business because the restaurant then becomes a stable, consistent buyer, those jobs indirectly will count. And then anybody that is touched through either as a kitchen user or just coming for business services, like, here's my business plan, can you look over that and see, you know, where I could improve that? If they then turn around and start a job, start a business and have jobs, we count those as well. So the reach on this is not just people who are employed under the roof of the center, it is whoever is touched and has helped to expand their business or start a business. Additionally, we brought leverage funds to the table, and just to give you an idea, so Emily and I both sit on the leadership team, which is a smaller group of stakeholders, but we have a larger advisory team that is made up of 17 different project partners. And so they are advice, they are in-kind services, they are people who are in the field of local foods, that type of thing, that we are calling on to help us work through this project, and they've provided assistance during grant time as well. And then we also have leverage funds that we brought to the table. And the entire VCI grant, if you will recall, was $2.5 million. That was then split into a housing portion, which goes directly to Taylor Hollow, and so the portion we're talking about, that the county will be getting under contract for potentially, is only $1.2 million. So when we brought that to the table, we said we've also got these funds totaling a little over $1.7 million. And some of them are grant funds, some of them are in-kind, some of them are from the private sector, you'll see Taylor Hollow is on this list for quite a large chunk of money, and then our two committed entrepreneurs with the restaurant and the brewery are also bringing some money to the table. So all of these things made our project stronger and give it a little bit more weight than just grant funds making this happen. It's actually more closer to one-to-one ratio. And so then, that just brings us to the business board tonight, which is just the resolution to take the next step into looking into entering into the contract that we have with DHCD. And we do have some caveats to that. We're working through the developer agreement that I mentioned earlier. That does not have to be in final form for us to enter the contract, but it will have to be in final form and agreeable to everyone before grant funds are exchanged. So that's how DHCD views that. So the vote tonight does not approve the developer agreement, it approves the ability to enter into the contract, and then we have, you know, the extra step of making sure all the legal documents are agreeable to everybody involved. And with that, we will take any questions if we may.
Supervisor Shepherd, this is in your district, I'll let you go first.
I have some questions about the jobs. So I guess one of my first questions is, is there a timeframe noted in the document that you have to hold those jobs? And if so, what is that timeframe?
So we have from grant closeout, which typically means when everything is built, they administratively close out the grant. We will have two years from that date to create all of the jobs. There is no length of time that the job has to be held. The 10-year time clock on the lien is more attached to the use of the building, to stay in a similar community use. So the jobs, once they're, we hit 29, it could fluctuate down, it could fluctuate back up.
Okay.
It's a snapshotting time. Once we hit the 29, it's considered achieved, the benefit's achieved, and they'll close us out after that.
And I guess, can you explain a little bit more? I'll say in detail, I'm not sure that's exactly what I mean, when you said that those jobs don't have to be under that roof. Is that, like, let's say I have a small farm, and I raise tomatoes, and I sell you tomatoes, does that make me part of one of those employees, or does that make me one of those employees, I guess?
Yes, so the way that they're counted is if through a service, it could be a direct relation, it could be, you know, an employee of the restaurant itself, but let's say you are a farmer, and you then have a contract with the restaurant to provide tomatoes all summer, and because of that, you up your tomato production and hire an extra person, that job gets counted.
Okay.
And it is, it's just a one-page sort of self-reported form that we would have to get from that one employee that you expanded to add, and that goes into the tally. So everyone would know upfront, if you're a kitchen user, if you're a farmer who may sell to the restaurant, that this is a grant-related project, and if you were to expand or add jobs, we're going to be asking for some simple information from you. So you're going to be part of the team, so to speak, in helping us create those jobs.
All right.
I was just going to say, another example that we looked at was by using the incubators, basically the community kitchen, you actually may be someone who, we have a lot of data going into the grant on this, that you may have an existing small business that you run from home and you go to the farmer's market, but you have to do it from home because you don't have a certified kitchen through the Health Department and VDI. By having a certified kitchen, it could allow you to expand your business, whatever that may be, jams and delis, or anything you take to the farmer's market. By expansion, that also comes.
Oh, okay. That's all.
Supervisor Demoss?
You said that there was, or maybe Emily mentioned it, that there was a difference between the 29 jobs that, via the grant funding, that we are required to create and the actual projected, created jobs by the center. What was the projection? I know that it's not an exact science, but how many jobs do we project will be created at full build-out?
So we did project out a few years, which includes, so include everything a few years out, but we got to a shade under 70, and so when contractually that number was given to us of 29, we felt pretty safe that we could reach that number. And I mentioned all the areas that those things are coming from, but it's business competition, the restaurant, the commercial kitchen users, staff from the brewery and the restaurants, and then the center manager themselves. So by the end of year three of operations, I think, is that 70, about 70 number.
So as members of the leadership team, the 29 sounds comfortable, with 70 being something that we're projecting as kind of a, maybe a maximum.
And I think it's important to also note that the jobs that Jennifer was talking about are those that would qualify. So there were other types of jobs that could be generated through the project that didn't qualify to be counted, and some of those included Taylor Hollow actually bringing in additional construction and people to do the actual labor. That didn't count, but those were estimated to be another four to five jobs.
Wow. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
No, that was what I was interested in, the jobs, so, yes, for that.
Supervisor King?
So you said on the 29 jobs, I hope this don't happen, but if you don't have 29 new jobs, say you had 10, you can go out here and hire 19 people and get your quota, next day you can fire them, right?
Sorry, I missed the latter. And I say, fire them. I guess that's...
I mean, you said as long as you hit the 29 mark, you're good.
That's correct.
They're going to do away with your paperwork?
The extra caveat is that they would have to be, they would have to be real, and we are going to have to get, like I said, sort of one-page self-reported information on them, the documents, these are real people, this was a real job. And they'll have to self-report also, like, their low to moderate income status is another thing that we have to take into consideration, since these funds, that is their focus, is low to moderate income people and giving them job opportunities, but not as extreme as that, but yes, the jobs could fluctuate after we hit that 29 mark, and it would be okay, as long as then the building continued to be in the same or similar use that we set out to use it for.
Supervisor Perkins?
I don't know if you've said this someplace or not, how much are these paying jobs? Where does the money come from to pay them, and what is the average pay for people who might be involved in it?
So we did a little bit of that. You know, the businesses themselves, if they're going to be a viable business, they have to be able to pay staff.
Right, right.
So, you know, that's sort of a normal answer.
They're going to determine that, or do you all have a set B that you say has to be?
No, we don't dictate that, and actually, you know, as long as they're at least getting minimum wage, those entry-level type jobs with room to grow and expand is what DHCD is looking for. They won't be as pleased if we were to bring in a law firm and everyone's making $50 to $100 an hour. They're looking for those lower entry-level jobs, you know, that pay minimum wage to $12, and we can go above that as well, but they want a nice balance of jobs that could be available to someone who does not necessarily have to come with a, you know, higher education degree.
Okay, so you have a leeway up to $12?
I'm just throwing out.
That you can tell the people that are hiring the people?
As long as we have more than half who self-certify that they meet a low to moderate income wage, which is dictated to us, then we're checking off the boxes. And so if there's a mix, that's fine, too.
Okay. Because I know there usually is a stipulation of what the paying jobs should be with regard to what you're doing.
They don't dictate the wage down that far, just the ability for an entry-level person to have a majority of those jobs.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Spark any other questions? Thank you all very much, I appreciate it greatly. Is there a motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Next item is new business, subject A, agreement with DHCD grant funding for old Prices Fork Elementary School Comprehensive Community Revitalization Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Subject B, recognition of state championship, uh, no, recognition of state championship teams. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Will the letter be, the letter will be written on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, correct?
Yes. By the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, that the Board hereby authorizes the chair to sign letters.
Yeah, okay.
They'll be from the entire Board.
And they've moved all of them, right?
Every state championship that we get.
Which is a bunch.
Yes, which is a bunch, and we might get a few more.
Yeah, it's all right.
Well, I've been nagging about this for a while, so I just want to make sure.
That's a good thing. There was a motion and a second, and Madam Clerk, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Proclamation, Older Americans Month, May 2017. Is there a motion?
And I want to know what's being given to me besides these words.
I'd rather see that called seasoned.
Seasoned. This is a motion and a second.
Mature is a good word.
Well, the resolution is as it is, so...
Well, it doesn't have an age on it.
No, it doesn't, but it says older.
Older.
And we know what that means.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Subject D, National Travel and Tourism Week, May 7 through the 13th, 2017. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Third.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ahs.
Subject E, Business Appreciation Month, May 2017.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Are we having a luncheon, a dinner, a rainy golf course, golf game? What are we having for that?
I know that the Chamber is doing some things during the month of May, but I'm not certain off the top of my head, but there were some events that Sharon Scott was going to be doing during the course of the month that the Chamber was involved with.
Yeah, you should check their website all the time during May, because they're going to be doing videos and all kinds of stuff.
You got all that updated, Avery, back there, on the website?
Yeah, I can speed read you.
I think, Avery, if you don't mind coming forward.
You've got so much going on, there's a lot going on there.
Good evening, Board, my name's Avery Graveson, I'm with the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce. Our office is at 1520 North Franklin Street in Christiansburg. Thank you all for the proclamation, it means a lot to have the support of the Board of Supervisors and both town councils. We think having a vibrant business community is a key to having a vibrant community as a whole, and so it's great to have your support. As far as any events going on, we don't have any events planned for the month of May. On June 1st, though, we will be having our bocce ball tournament, which is, does support the business community and does support our Teacher of the Year programs as well. And throughout the month of May, we will be doing a Facebook Live campaign to highlight a lot of businesses in the county, some businesses in our Chamber that we think make a big difference in the community. So, thank you all for your support on the half of our members in the Chamber and our Board.
Thank you very much, Avery. You're welcome. Was there a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Is there some way we, I don't know, I think it's people ask, they have a small business of the month?
I think that sometimes the Chambers do that, and then they do the ribbon cuttings, they'll do business of the month and some of those things.
Yeah, we do have ribbon cuttings throughout the month, I'd be happy to send this to those, or this to those, if any of you all want.
I'm talking about, you want a business that's already going.
The Chambers usually, I know, they do ribbon cuttings, but do you, Avery, if you don't mind asking, do you guys recognize a business of the month, the Chamber? do you guys recognize a business of the month, the chamber? Do you guys do that?
No, we do not.
Okay.
But tell them about nominations for business of the year.
We do have a business of the year award and a small business of the year award that are awarded in December. But we don't do any monthly awards of that kind.
And those nomination forms are out now, right?
Yes, you can nominate people through our website and at most of our events, we carry the paper slips.
Thank you. Thank you, Avery.
All right, there was motion and then the second, and any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bay?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes.
County attorneys report. County administrators report.
Just one item. As most of you know, April was a very challenging month. We had a lot of meetings. We had a lot of other challenges within the organization during the month. But we certainly topped it off with a wonderful event on April 29th with the opening of the new animal care and adoption center. And I'm sure Supervisor Bix is going to talk more about that, but I just want to thank everybody for the support. That's been quite a busy facility since it opened already. And I encourage folks, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that facility, you really need to see what it's all about. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bix?
Well, going along those lines, first I want to publicly thank the board for the naming of the cat room. I've been over in the cat room since last time, two different times. And I went over Sunday and they were busy. I was there about an hour and that place was busy the whole time. And so I sort of wanted to know what was going on during the last week. And evidently, it's been busy every day, which is really good. So right now, here is our good news report. We currently have nine cats and 26 dogs that are available for adoption. Four other dogs at this time are not available. And since the grand opening, we have had nine dogs and five cats adopted. We've had seven cats that are fostered, and that includes a mother that came in with kittens. And then we've had one dog transferred to rescue since the grand opening and two cats transferred to rescue since the grand opening. So things are very busy over there. And I've had a lot of people say some really positive things. They're really excited about it. And just remind everyone that it's a place to come, it's a destination. There is a community room there. We're going to encourage, you know, activities with families and children. And I just think that we were just at the beginning to see what kind of asset this is going to be for our county. So again, thank you for, last Saturday was so very, very exciting, on the 29th was so very exciting. And that's all I want to say about that. But I will try to give you reports as we go through. I know Jennifer, our PR person, is giving you reports too, but that's the latest update. Then I wanted to tell you about the symposium I went to yesterday. I was representing VACO, but I got to represent our county at the same time, which I thought was a good thing. I drove to Charlottesville and back, and I was on a panel, and it was the Virginia Symposium on Philanthropy, Collaborating for Kids, Families, and Communities. And it was presented by US Trust, which is Bank of America Private Wealth Management. It was at the Farmingdale Country Club right outside Charlottesville. So it was sort of eye-opening for me since I don't hang around places like that. But what was interesting was, I was on a panel with Dr. Hazel. And many of you know Dr. Hazel. He's the Secretary of Health and Human Services for the Commonwealth of Virginia. He asked me specifically to come and talk to this group of 150 people that had money and to talk about local government and to talk about the gaps that we have in funding. Because as I told the group, the buck doesn't stop here. Unfortunately, we have a lack of bucks that stop here from the Fed to the state to here. And so we have gaps. And so I told them, we were very blessed in this county to have people step forward and volunteer and donate money for many different causes, but we don't seem to have an umbrella. We don't, everyone doesn't know what's really going on in our county in that regard. But we're not alone in that. So what this group was about is, they want to sort of form a way that people can come together so that the people that have money, that are willing to invest in needed things, would know where to invest their money. And so I specifically talked about some of the things we had going on in Montgomery County. And then I sort of approached it from across the state, like what are the needs across the state? And of course, there are big needs with families, children, education, et cetera. But it was really interesting, and what the hope is, is that this group will continue. The first lady was there as one of the presenters at the beginning. It went on through today, so I'm not sure what happened today. I'm hoping to get a report on that, but I wanted to let you all know that this was out there. And I don't know, maybe has some potential because I sure stuck my foot out there and said, we have a lot of things that need money here in Montgomery County. So we'll see what happens. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Demoss?
Just one thing, and I know all of you are aware that I am a member of the Mount Tabor Ruatan Club. And this coming Saturday from 5:00 to 7:00, that's May 13th, we are kicking off the fish fry season for 2017. This is the 47th season of fish fries with the Ruatan Club. And we will have Indian-run string band. Is that correct, Bill? Indian-run string band will be playing music. It's all-you-can-eat. And I encourage everybody to come out. All money, all proceeds from the event do go right back into community organizations that are providing various services in the community. So it's a great way to have a good time and give a little back to the community at the same time.
Are you cooking?
No. Nobody wants that.
Supervisor Shepard, your report. And Supervisor Perkins?
Okay, we, I went to that opening, but that we had and they had. And it truly is magnificent. I just, I can't believe it. And I think Mary's right. I think Mary's planning on touring all the 50 states and see if she can get other people to donate money and to build animal shelters just half as nice as we have. So I really thank all the people who worked on that and all of us who were, well, not all of us, but who were agreeable to paying the money for it. Then the other thing that I went to is something that is very dear to my heart. And I know Mary's and I saw April there, is the ACE program. And we went and, let's see, Chris, I saw you.
And Daryl.
And Daryl, I saw as well.
And Craig.
And Craig. So all of us got there, but it was, and Chris maybe will want to add some to it, or Mary or April, whoever, Daryl. We had a very large turnout. And we, let's see, we had the Chief of Police in Bloxburg who spoke. We had the new president of New River Community College. And if you don't know Pat Huber, you really should get to know her. She is a fantastic lady. And her husband was the, what'd he say, seven?
County Administrator.
Yeah, he was the county administrator in Pulaski, but it was 17 years, I think.
We saw.
So anyway.
He retired and she got promoted.
That's right. So now she has no domestic duties. Peter has to do all that. But anyway, she spoke, and then Angie Covey, who is the lead person for all of this, spoke. And she talked, and we also had two students along with Buzz Williams, who is the basketball coach at Tech. And he was talking about how they talk, how he talks with his recruits and his players about how you take care of finances and what you do and don't just throw your money away, which I think an awful lot of professional players that we have now do this because they've never been used to having money. And so anyway, it was just a nice evening. There were refreshments of food, really, for that. And I just, I don't know, we had people at Lawhorn from the community foundation, I think, speak. So did I miss anybody? I think that was everybody. But really, it was, they were not long speeches, but they were people who were really, really interested in the ACE program and the students who would benefit from being able to participate in. And I just think about this, and I know the students I taught are some that Mary saw grow up and have it. It would be, it's wonderful to be able to tell juniors or seniors, you can go to the community college for free. You can get your start. And the thing that just boiled me over when they said, one of the young man that spoke was studying in instrumentation. And they said, the people from New River said, that somebody who has a two-year degree from New River and is supposed to have the best instrumentation program on the East Coast, start out making $80,000. Now, don't everybody run quickly to the instrumentation program. It just really did shock me. I guess as a teacher, I started out with $3,750. And when I finished, I think I was making $38,000 when I retired. So you can see that I don't think money is really the, probably not the main motivation for a lot of the students after they get into that program. The main motivation, I think, is how you live life and how you develop. And so anyway, I was very excited to be there. So many people in the community, not just leaders and not, but people. People from the community who were obviously interested in this program too. So it really did my heart good to be there last night. And I think that's the most important thing that I can tell you because I can't even remember when I first heard about it and brought it to Craig and to this board. I think I did it under a board member report. And so anyway, it was, it's fantastic. And I'm so grateful that we do have money to do it. And there are a lot of people who want to donate. This is a public-private industry or issue or whatever we call it. It's a public-private thing. And Mary, you know, that's what you were talking to those people about, how we had a public-private partnership for Auburn, did we not? Did we? And for the whole school when we were.
Oh, when they built them.
Yeah, when we built the schools.
But that was like just, yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah, we had, we went that way, in that direction. So anyway, it was fantastic. And I think it's wonderful that we're participating in it too for the young people. That's the, that is the main thing. I'm sorry it was a long report, but there's so much to tell about it that's so good. You all need to investigate in it, and it's a good place to invest your money too. So you know you're helping. How many kids does it pay for Montgomery County, Craig?
The last projection I heard was 400 is what they're expecting. And that's a projection.
That's just the projection. But that is, and a very great part of this, getting the free tuition is that you have to give service back to the community. 80 hours a semester of service work to the community. So anyway, it's a wonderful deal. Thank you.
Supervisor Kent?
Just got one thing. It's getting warm outside, and this is Motorcycle Awareness Month. So please watch out for the motorcycles.
Thank you. I have a few things. As y'all know, I'm liaison with the Planning Commission. They have been working very hard with the sign ordinance. You may get some phone calls and the like, and there have been a few people contacting. This is not where the Planning Commissioner, the Planning Department said, hey, look, we're going to come up with some new sign ordinance. This is, the United States Supreme Court handed this down. And I know I've mentioned it other meetings, they have been working very hard. It's very complicated to be able to comply with what the Supreme Court says as far as freedom of speech. That's been, they spent a lot of time on that, that will be coming our way eventually in regards to that situation. As far as the ACE program, I received some phone calls. Several folks have heard about the commitment that Chief Wilson made about dedicating two years of his life to volunteer to operate and work on the ACE program. We're getting other individuals who are willing to make that commitment as well. And you may have heard last night, other localities do different areas of community service. I know Giles uses their recycling center and they're, in regards to their golf course for kids to volunteer at. You know, our goal is to utilize fire, rescue, and their auxiliaries in a very, very, very broad fashion. And talking with Chief Wilson again today, he says, I may order three loads of mulch and the auxiliaries may all show up, and we may be spreading mulch at the library. We may be spreading mulch, but we'll utilize that sense of community through our fire and rescue. The kids who are meant to be like Supervisor King and respond to those fire calls and rescue calls, they'll automatically qualify because they'll be putting in more than 80 hours a semester. And so they'll fit in, and it'll also help bring some revitalization to our programs. And so I'm very hopeful about that. And it was a wonderful turnout. I greatly appreciate the board members that could be there. I know Mr. King would have liked to have been, but his full-time job kept him away last night. And I know that Supervisor Creed would have liked to have been there as well. But it was a great turnout with some folks who are going to hopefully be able to meet that private sector and write some checks in support. And Chief Wilson indicated today that he's already gotten some emails and some phone calls because of last night's event. And so I'm very happy that the board went ahead and moving forward with the ACE program. I think that that is going to be something that Supervisor Shepard talked about legacies and things that we can look back on that we've done. And that's going to be something we're going to be able to be proud of. That being said, I don't believe that there's any other business. This meeting is adjourned.